I'd like to call the Monthly Board of Education meeting in order. Please stand with Pledge Allegiance.
We pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Motion to approve the agenda.
I'll make that motion.
Keenan makes a motion, does she have a second?
Second.
Ms. Crater on second. Show of hands. Four oh. I might need some binoculars.
Baptist.
Hey, Mike. Participation and statements?
Thank you, Mr. President. We had no one request participation as per Board Policy BDDH.
Written communications?
We had no written communications either.
Military update?
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen and members of the Board. I just had the privilege of recently returning from Washington DC and the Chief of Staff of the Army and all the leadership there have nothing but outstanding comments about Waynesville and the outstanding partnership that we have. Our PI, which is, you know, your partnership in education program where the soldiers, Marines, Navy, even Coast Guard interact with the school to provide last year over 5,000 hours of volunteer service and partnership. So, just nothing but kudos from the leadership in the Army. Also, the relationship that continues just adds to the active duty who come to this area. And one of the, you know, first things they often look at is the school system and their outstanding ratings and the reputation has just been awesome. And also, it helps for the active duty to stay here. And they are often voluntold where they have to go. However, they often have an opportunity to stay. And so, just the outstanding educational opportunity is just a big boost for the military and it adds to our mission and what we do in serving the country. So, I wanted to thank the school board and on the just outstanding relationship and the success of the students that are here. And thank you very much. One more, we have a boss, which is our better opportunities than single soldiers. Just a quick pitch, they have a haunted house on post this weekend and it's on our Facebook page and whatnot. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. We do appreciate the PI partnerships. I know all the buildings appreciate it very much. District announcements, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have two schools in the building tonight. So, let's see if we can, we can hear it from Partridge. Thayer, I think you can do better. Thayer, let's hear it from Thayer. No, and we appreciate both of these buildings. Outstanding elementaries. I appreciate Mrs. Kelly, Mrs. Persaud, having me in to read the other day. Don't worry, I'll get my data straight tonight, Partridge. Thayer, we always appreciate you attending. I was just out last Friday, had a, had a great super session. I'm always happy when, when Mrs. Fobian doesn't make us do calcistics before the, the meeting. So, tonight, I want to begin with publicly acknowledging our students and staff for our 2019 annual performance report scores. Later, you will hear that our Waynesville R6 students scored above the state average in English and math, subgroup achievement, attendance, graduation rate, and college and career assessments. These results are outstanding, would not be possible without the support of our school board and our community. Partridge and Thayer Elementary are being recognized this month for helping our students learn and grow in grades K through five. During our Board of Education Spotlight, we will recognize individuals and a team from each of our buildings. October is National Principals Month, so thank you, principals, for doing such a great job and leading our buildings. We appreciate you. I also want to thank our community for making Homecoming a great success and congratulations to Williams Early Childhood Center for winning first place in the Homecoming Float Competition. They'll receive the Traveling Tiger Pride Trophy this evening. They, yes, they have a look of victory about them. Look at that. Yes, yes, alright. Parent-teacher conferences for students in the Waynesville R6 School District will be held as follows. Students may want to turn down the volume right now. Elementaries, grade K-5, October 22nd and 24th from 4:00 to 7:30. Grade 7-12, October 21st and 24th from 3:00 to 6:30. This Friday, Military Appreciation Night, October 25th at Tiger Stadium. All active-duty service members, including National Guard and Reserves and military retirees with military ID, will be admitted to the game free of charge. There'll be no school on Friday, October the 25th, November 11th, and November 27th, 28th, and 29th. Waynesville High School will host the Free South Central District Honor Band Concert at 5:00 PM Saturday, November 2nd, and the South Central District Choir Concert at 4:00 PM Saturday, November the 9th. And the community-wide survey will close this Friday, October 25th. If you haven't already done so, please go in and click on the survey and provide us your feedback. Thank you.
I would say there was some rumbling. I heard administrator from East Elementary complain, say that it wasn't fair when you had little kids and puppies. That's how you guys won. So, that shouldn't be fair. So, I don't know.
That's all they have there. All they have are little kids and a puppy.
I'm a little upset that me and Henry didn't win.
Whatever it takes.
Me and Henry can't figure out why we didn't win.
I know. We threw a lot of candy. A lot of melted chocolate that day. Yeah.
Consent agenda. Bid recommendations, Dr. Berger.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Just the one, just the single one. I'll entertain any questions.
And financials?
Financials, yes. For October 21, and they're split on two pages, so. In the Bank of Crocker MOSIP account, $42,128,141.61. CDs, $10.5 million. General account, $2,319,959.55. Payroll account, $97,031.20. Total funds, $55,45,131.36.
Thank you. The motion to approve agenda items A through G.
I'll make that motion.
Keenan makes a motion, does she have a second? Pondrum's second. On favor, show of hands. Four oh. Student recognitions. Student Leadership Team, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. As the Board knows, because they were the ones that had the wisdom to do this, we started last year a student leadership team to provide input into the operation of the school district from various levels, classroom, intervention, building. I did learn a lesson my first year that when I asked students to, to comment on building climate, I need to probably explain that because I got a lot of information on temperatures in classrooms, heat, things of that nature. But, they, they do an outstanding job and we really appreciate the, the students we have with us this year. Some of them are still in attendance this evening and they'll be coming up here. We had more that were here earlier, but due to practices and the busy life of, of secondary students, they couldn't hang around. But, we did feed them, so they should be very happy this evening now. So, I'll read all of their names, however, all of them won't be here and then we'll do a picture afterwards and students, thank you for your time. We do appreciate it. James Loughlin III. Come forward, please. I know you're here.
He told me he's just here for the food.
Well, yeah.
Whatever, thanks.
Very good. Come on up, come on up. You can tell how much they like me. Yeah. Congratulations. There you go. You can go right over there and take a picture of everybody? Okay. Lauren Lurcher, I don't think Lauren was able to make it this evening. Gavin Crabtree, my Giants fan, is here this evening. Thanks, Gavin. Appreciate it. Helen Kamara? Helen's not here anymore? Okay. Madeline Ram? Thank you, Madeline. Appreciate it. Anaya Smith? Haley Underwood? Thanks, Haley. Appreciate it. Julian Vargas? Great job, thank you. Katie Blau, I don't think Katie's with us this evening. Rock Chug J-Hop.
Go Bulldogs.
Okay. Grant Kendrick? Grant's not with us. Cheyenne Levingood? Sophia Shipley-Johnson? Truman Trower? Shawn Berrios? I said they were busy and some took time out. We appreciate that. Thanks, Colin. Jessica Chapman? Jordan Wilson? Nothing like leaving anything in there, right? Thank you, Jordan. Appreciate it. And, I think that concludes this. So, this is this year's Student Leadership Team.
Alright.
I'm gonna give it to Katie again. She says it's a Georgia thing in her mind. Thank you all, we appreciate it.
Yeah, thank you, guys.
Amber's here, I feel safe.
Move on to Section 8, Spotlight on Education. Partridge Elementary, Mrs. Kelly and Mrs. Scott.
Tonight, I have the privilege to honor Ms. Jeannie Wade and Ms. Donna Murray for our Spotlight on Education. Mrs. Wade is in her 24th year of teaching. Partridge has been fortunate to have her 19 of those years. She began her teaching career in pre-K and has taught kindergarten through 5th grade. Ms. Wade has dedicated herself to inspire the love of reading in children. She helps kids who don't like to read find books or series that they would be interested in. If a student has finished a series of books, she will order the next set or find something similar that she knows students will interest the kids. Not only does Mrs. Wade spark the love of reading in our students, she also teaches enrichment groups during wind time. Ms. Wade often collaborates with teachers to implement a project. She is currently working with Mrs. Lammy and they have joined forces with nine schools around the world to create a mural of peace, friendship, diversity, and love. Mrs. Wade, we are thankful to have you at Partridge.
I now have the honor to introduce Mrs. Donna Murray. This is Mrs. Murray's 18th year in the district and her 16th year at Partridge Elementary. Mrs. Murray is in her third year as head cook at Partridge. Mrs. Donna is dedicated to her work and always gives 110% at everything she does. Mrs. Donna deals very well with the business of the cafeteria. Even when a lunch count gets mixed up, Mrs. Donna tries to accommodate everyone's needs. Mrs. Murray's team works well together and the students move through the line quickly due to their cohesiveness. She is a great leader in our cafeteria and we are lucky to have her. Okay, would Mrs. Scott and Mrs. Outen come on up, please? The Collaborative Team Spotlight is awarded to our 3rd grade team tonight, Mrs. Kathy Outen and Mrs. Kelly Scott. On the pre-test for standard 3 MBTA3, demonstrating fluency with addition and subtraction within 1,000, 29% of their students were proficient or advanced on the pre-test. And on the post-test, 75% of those students were proficient or advanced. The EDI strategy used to teach this standard was Chinette. This allowed the teachers to give immediate feedback and identify the students still in need of support. The 3rd grade, the 3rd grade team works together to ensure that all students are learning and they are great at analyzing data to guarantee standards are being taught to proficiency. One of their coworkers said, "Mrs. Outen and Mrs. Scott are always helpful to the other teams. I can go to them with any questions and they are always willing to help out in any way they can. Thank you for all that you do for our students."
Congratulations.
The Board of Education Spotlight for our Certified Staff Member will be honoring Dara Fobian. Mrs. Fobian is the teacher leader for Thayer Elementary. Dara's been teaching for the Waynesville School District since 2003. She's taught 2nd grade for the past 12 years and spent 5 years in 1st grade. She's enthusiastic and positive. She builds wonderful relationships with her students and their families. Many parents who've had children in her class return to volunteer even after their children have moved on to higher grade levels. She takes time to reflect on her teaching strategies to ensure the instruction her students receive is the best possible. She seeks advice from her colleagues and collaborates effectively with her teammates during our Wednesday PLC time. Her mind is always planning innovative ways to encourage collaboration for the staff members. Because of her leadership, Walk the Talk is being implemented, as well as teacher-peer observations once a month. Teachers have the time to watch their peers teach and gain new strategies to implement with their students. Our school is proud to recognize Mrs. Dara Fobian for the Certified Staff Member Board of Education Spotlight at Thayer Elementary. The Board of Education Spotlight for our Classified Staff goes to Mrs. Wendy Finch. She's an amazing nurse who goes above and beyond for the students and staff at Thayer Elementary. She's a caretaker to teachers and students alike. She's always there to make our children feel better as she cleans up scrapes. She then calms them and when they leave her office, it is usually with a smile on their faces. She's a great addition to our team in the office as well. She's friendly with new families as she checks over shot records and has even gone to the extent of helping our families from Brazil with limited language barriers feel right at home as she assists them with her invaluable resources. Mrs. Finch goes above and beyond to help everyone meet their needs and keep the building running smoothly. Tonight, we have the privilege to honor Mrs. Finch for the Classified Employee for the Board of Education Spotlight.
Tonight, I have the privilege to recognize Ms. Kathy Gann and Ms. Gordon from our kindergarten team. As they come forward. The Board of Education Spotlight will be given to Thayer's kindergarten team, which is comprised of Mrs. Gann and Ms. Gordon. Both of them come in with a smile on their faces, each stay and work tirelessly to teach their students. Not only do they need to teach them the academic concepts, they also have to teach them how to be a student. Some, having never been to school before, have a lot to learn. During the first quarter, the teachers gave a pre-test for identifying all upper and lowercase letters. On the pre-test, 22% of those students scored proficient or advanced. Teachers use deliberate practice as their intervention strategy to teach again those skills and the post-test data increased with a score of 63%, being proficient or advanced for first quarter. The teachers will continue to teach and assess this skill all year. The kindergarten team takes each of their students, regardless of the experiences and abilities they may lack, and prepares them for 1st grade. Tonight, I have the privilege and honor to recognize the kindergarten team to receive the Board of Education Spotlight for Thayer Elementary.
Congratulations, right there. Staff recognitions, first quarter Project Teach, Mrs. Bells.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mr. Mike Freeman from Seller Sexton Automobile Dealership, sponsor of the Project Teach Award, will present this quarter's $100 award to Linda Meckham, 4th grade teacher at Partridge Elementary.
Yeah.
Yay! For her project, Crack the Constitution Code.
Ms. Meckham, congratulations to you. What a, what a great night to see such teachers and, and staff being recognized for the outstanding job that you do. You make a difference in kids' lives. Never forget that. You make a difference. Ms. Meckham is with Partridge Elementary and she is your 4th grade teacher there, one of the 4th grade teachers. The 4th grade students in Missouri are required to learn the Bill of Rights, the Constitution, and the Declaration of Independence. At 9 and 10 years old, though, it's imperative to make this concept connect to their lives and not just become basic memorization. In our world today, a deep understanding of history and government is the backbone of understanding our, our, our national culture. So, for this project, Crack the Constitutional Code, students will, will participate in a constitutional-themed escape room. After a minimum of nine days, they're locked in this room for nine days, a prior instruction in which we dive into the Bill of Rights, the Declaration of Independence, the Constitution, and, and important historical individuals related to these concepts. Students will be ready to put their knowledge to the test. She wrote clues for students to solve, and the answer to those clues will be in a numerical format, giving them the combination code to unlock the safe. Some of the clues will require students to use magnifying glasses to hunt for information. Other clues will, clues will even be written with an invisible ink pen using a black light to highlight the words. The possibilities for engagements are endless. And once the clue is discovered, they will then go to the locked box and once opened, the box will provide them with the next clue. They don't have the answers yet. They will continue this process until they have ultimately cracked the Constitution Code. So, through the money rewarded by this grant, she's going to purchase small wooden boxes, numerical locks, an invisible ink pen, a magnifying glass, and I've got an old black light. A card stock for the clues that was stained with teabags to make it appear as a historical document, making a difference. That's what these parents and these teachers are doing. That's what you all do. Never forget that again. So, tonight, recognizing your first quarter 2019, 2020 Teacher of the Quarter, Ms. Linda Meckham.
Congratulations. Mike, again, as long as I'm sitting here, I'm gonna tell you this every time, thank you for everything Seller Sexton does for the Waynesville School District. We truly, truly appreciate you guys.
You're a lovely servant, y'all.
Thank you. Transportation Employee of the Month, Mrs. Bells.
Thank you, Mr. President. It's again my honor to recognize October's Transportation Employee of the Month, Lacey Jordan. Lacey has been a school bus driver for the last two years. She is very dependable and always has a positive attitude. Even through an ankle injury, Lacey has helped out where she can in the office, helping students and parents. She handles everything with ease and has an excellent temperament. She is a true joy to be around and we appreciate everything she does for our students and our district. Thank you, Lacey, and congratulations.
MCCTA Assistant Administrator of the Year Award, Dr. Atkins, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Dr. Atkins could not be with us this evening due to an illness in the family, so you have her, as I said in the study session, rusty relief pitcher and on all the academic things this evening. But, tonight, there's so many things I could say about this individual and, but I won't because in the interest of time. The Missouri Council of Career and Technical Administrators has recognized John Smith as the Assistant Director of the Year. John has done an excellent job for us in his role. We appreciate that. In the time period that he and Dr. Patterson has been in that building, we've seen tremendous growth in IRC scores, TSA scores, pass rates literally have went through the roof and we sure appreciate all that you're doing. In addition, he works quite a bit in partnering with Fort Leonard Wood and trying to find new avenues to, to enhance our partnership with them. So, while I was gonna tease him about car sales or the Cardinals, I won't do that this evening. I'll just say, "Thank you, John, and congratulations."
Moving to the Spirit Award, Dr. Henry. Aren't you complaining about doing calcistics earlier?
I did. And you told the students I ran. You know that's not true. Okay. Yeah, watch, watch out here. Okay. Each year, it's always a, a lot of, a lot of fun to give this award. Each year, we, we have our, our big Tiger Spirit Award that we give out. This is a traveling trophy that goes out to the school who places, places first in the contest for the floats at our Homecoming Parade, which we know is the best Homecoming Parade in Missouri. You look down, I feel like I'm, I'm looking at the St. Patrick's Day Parade or something like that where I'm from. So, it's fantastic, a huge turnout. And, small but mighty, this year, Williams Early Childhood Center has won the award and we have several people here to, to receive it. It's gonna take you all to carry that. So, congratulations to the Early Childhood Center and thank you for your spirit.
Moving to discussion item, Waynesville Middle School Construction Update, Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. President. We have Don Husman from DHA here to give us a progress report.
Good evening. It's kind of difficult to follow all of these awards and such when we're just looking at construction, but I, I like it. We were last on site on October the 9th, so these photos that you'll see this evening might appear a little dated compared to where the contractor has the building today. But, on October the 9th, we were beginning to see masonry, exterior masonry walls proceeding. Another view of a very similar area. And, what takes quite a bit of time in, in constr- And what takes quite a bit of time in construction, especially on a project like this, are the massively tall and thick concrete foundations. You can just imagine if you go around toward the back of the building, you can often see inside of those forms and see the massive amount of steel that's in the concrete that reinforces it and makes it even stronger. Again, forms, and there's some of the reinforcing steel. It looks like you're looking through a screen mesh, but those bars are all an excess of a half an inch thick. Sort of more of the same, but during that time period, that's what was going on, footings Images now of if we were standing on the interior side of the building, so we're beginning to see some interior masonry walls, and oftentimes those are constructed because of their load-bearing. In other words, the roof structure and such will eventually bear on top of those walls, and oftentimes those walls are reinforced with that steel. So it's a process of threading those concrete blocks through all of that steel structure, which is, that's why those guys have very large arms. And again, this is the last image, this is an interior shot of what will be one of the interior stairways that will be directly in front of the gymnasium. And that's it for this evening. Are there any questions I could answer? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Don.
Don.
Library media update, Mr. Henson.
Good evening, Mr. President and Board members. Thank you for the opportunity to share out tonight about our library media program. So through this report, I'm going to share our story mainly through a lot of pictures. There's not a lot of data or numbers here with our library media center, but I feel our story can be shared through the images I'm going to share with you. So our goals and objectives for the library media program is to provide teachers and students with resources to become 21st century learners within a safe learning environment, provide a diverse book collection to meet the reading interest of all learners, and to research to stay informed on current policies and trends pertaining to library media centers. So you can see there on the picture on the left, that is our, it's kind of dark, I apologize for that, but that is at our Waynesville Middle School, that beautiful library we have there. And you can see that is just full of students collaborating together. And there on the right is our room that used to be our two labs directly behind you. That is kind of our virtual lab now, some students in there, reading, working on their Chromebooks, and so forth. So our library media centers, we have 10 media centers throughout the district. We have 10 library media specialists. East and Freedom have two each. The high school, middle school, 6th grade, and our post elementary schools each have one. Career Center and Early Childhood Center, they do not have a library media specialist, but we do have one library media secretary that splits here between the high school and middle school. And here we have three pictures of three of our 10 library media specialists. I would like to say something too about our secretary we have. This year, you know, we rolled out one-to-one Chromebooks at the middle school and high school. Our secretary was an instrumental part, Ms. Ellis, in making that happen. She was, for lack of better words, a rock star. I mean, she got in there, she worked, she kept everything organized, and she made it happen, so happy to have her. So our school library media centers, they're a place of opportunity, they're a place where students can collaborate, develop a love of reading, explore the world around them through print and electronic resources. These three little guys down below, that's part of our Love-a-Reading Day. They each dressed up as their favorite book character. We have Harry Potter, we have the, in the middle, we have a character from Goosebumps, and then on the far right, we have the main character from the Magic Treehouse stories. So our library media centers, so far this year, books that have been checked out during first quarter, there's been over 32,000 books checked out across the district. Our library media centers have both a fixed and flex schedules. We enjoy when guest readers can come in, we have STEM and STEAM activities, Makerspace Areas, and one of our favorite things, our Love-a-Reading Day. I was trying to find somewhere to include this picture because you cannot look at this picture without smiling. This little guy is, he's so proud of his glasses. The book that I have up there is Philomena's New Glasses, that's one of the books that we used with Love-a-Reading this year, and this book is all about differences, how we're not all the same, but we are different. But I couldn't help but when this picture was sent to me, but smile because this little guy is as proud as he can be. So we do have guest readers, whether it be a rocking chair reader program. Two, I believe it's two of our schools have therapy dogs that hang out in the library. We also love it when our Pi partners, they do visit our schools a lot, whether it be an elementary school or a middle school. They're there frequently, reading to our students, and many times they have an author that does Skype in and read to our students or talk to them just about writing in general. Our library media centers have been doing STEM and STEAM activities for several years now, whether they do a collaborative lesson with classes or whether they do family nights where parents come in in the evenings and they may do it, if they're at Easter Freedom, they may do it by house, or at the post schools, they may do it by grade level. But parents come in, the teachers have activities, or the librarians have activities planned for the parents and students, whether it be within the STEM or STEAM. Makerspace Areas, so this is kind of a concept that caught on about three years ago. All of our library media centers now have a Makerspace Area, and basically that's just an area that offers students the space to be creative, using different resources, whether it be a computer, an iPad, manipulatives, robots, or crafts. The picture on the far left, there's actually, some young students are using the robot dot, and they're actually learning how to add and subtract through coding. They tell it to go up three, go back one, and they find the answer. Then there on, the far picture on the right, they're using another robot that we have, the BeBot, and those little guys are learning their sight words. So Love-a-Reading Day this year, we just had it last week. They did a One Book, One School theme this year, was also on diversity. Two of the books that they read throughout the building, they shared, and all the activities were created around it was, The Wish Tree was one of the books, and The Wish Tree is about, make sure I got the right thing here, was about kindness, friendship, and hope. And then Philomena's, you saw that earlier, that was about how we're all different. We also had a poster of Be the Eye in Kind. Kids came through, a lot of the schools built big wish trees throughout the school building. They had a tag, they were able to go around after they read the book, put their wish, and then, of course, all the kids were showing their differences with their different glasses that they liked from Philomena. So Love-a-Reading Day, many of you were able to guest read. I can't tell you how much we appreciate it when we do have guest readers. Our students absolutely love it when we have adults outside of their regular teachers or librarians that come in and read to them. We do have Love-a-Reading twice a year, we have a fall and a spring. I will make sure I get ahold of you again in the spring, if you're willing to come out, we would love to have you. The librarians were very excited this year when they didn't know that I was reaching out to everyone to try to get readers within their buildings, so once they found out I had, whether it be administrators, board members, community members coming in, they were extremely excited, so we appreciate that. So are there any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Henson. Beginning of the Year Performance Date, Dr. Henry.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight we have our STAR reading and math scores for you to look at. One thing that I'd like to start this out with, just to preface, this is our beginning point for the year, this is the first assessment that we take for STAR, guides our exact path, and it provides a basis for where we need to go. So when you see scores in here, and they may look different from the year before, that's pretty typical. You have different groups of kids coming in, there's different levels that they're going to come in with, so the big thing is, is we know where they're at, and our buildings can use this information to help base the instruction and the instructional interventions that they're going to use. So I'm not going to read each particular slide for you other than to show you that STAR early literacy with our younger folks, as you can tell, there's some areas where, compared to the previous year, our groups are stronger, others not so strong, and that's pretty typical at this stage of the game, so we use this info to help us prepare. As far as the reading scores go, it's divided up into benchmark, scaled scores, grade level equivalency, which are different measures in looking where students are in the different grade levels. And so you don't see consistency necessarily in each of those different metrics, but when you do look across here, you can see once again, it can be kind of a mixed bag going into the year, but again, that's, we want to see from this point forward when we're reporting to the board growth from these scores. And I know our leaders in the audience here and their faculties are working very hard on that. This is a look at the performance by benchmark by building, first through 5th grade. And then you have average scale score, and your scale scores are raw scores converted to a standard score based on various factors, and as you can tell, there's different things in reading. One thing, as I was reviewing this data, you know, when you look at this, it's lower across the board with the exception of 10th grade, and kind of the theme that you'll see through the reading data is, we do need to look very closely at that at the start of this school year. There are some areas that should, as collaborative teams, that we should flag to make sure that we're looking at very closely. And here's the different buildings as far as scale score goes. And then the final metric used here is average grade equivalency for the beginning of the year. You can see, once again, some areas, stronger groups in the grade levels, other areas not quite as strong as we had in the previous year. And here's how that looks by building. So overall, you can tell from the data with math, there are some areas, or excuse me, reading, there are some areas that we need to focus in on, but I do know that our building leaders and their teams, steering teams are working very hard already to address those issues, and it's informing our instruction. Math is a little different story in the fact that math across the board, using the same metrics, benchmark, scale score, grade equivalency, overall looks pretty strong in each of those indicators. And really, math for us over the last year now, with the APR that we'll talk about in a little bit, has been strong. And talking to some of our building leaders, I know the new GoMath at the elementary level has been successful, they've designed excellent interventions to address the needs of students in differentiated environments, so there's some things going on in math that are really strong, and we'll talk more about those in just a little bit. Here's the average scale score again for math, and then this is how it looks at by building. So you see they're just not, it's not quite as erratic in math as what you saw in the area of reading. And then grade equivalency. And here's what that looks like by building. So with that, if you have any questions, I'll make sure that we, that I volunteer one of our principals in the audience to answer that for you. No, I got it, I got it. Any questions that you have?
Okay. Since you're there.
Yes, sir.
2019 Annual Performance.
Absolutely. Love talking about APR. And this year, as we discuss this in detail during our study session, so I'll move through this a little more quickly, but to say that it's a different report this year than what we've had in the past, we're no longer using a single score to tell how the district did. And overall, on the APR, I shared with you kind of my reservations on some of that because in our setting, in working with military leaders and leaders in the federal government, it's very easy to convey when you say we're 95% or 98% or 100%. This is a little more difficult. You have to get into the metrics more on growth and status and progress, so we're going to do the best we can in messaging on this, and I do think it does carry the potential to be a bit confusing, so we encourage our leaders, and we're going to speak more about this as we get into our next DLT, but also, as we spoke in our study session, just to be as clear as we can with the overall message on it and say that we had a great year. I mean, really, overall, it's probably the strongest APR we've had in our district, and though we don't have science scores yet, that will be amended to the APR, it will be re-released in November. That's still something that we look forward to, but I can tell you that in the early initial population of the scores, things look good in comparison to the state as well in science. Social Studies was a field test last year, so we don't have data in that area yet, so we're looking mostly at ELA and math, so I'll give you the fancy graphic right there. Now, I would encourage folks when you're looking at this to read it from left to right and look at what the, this whole standard one academic achievement is, what they're trying to convey with this information. First of all, the far left, you're looking at growth, and growth is the comparison of two data points with the student as they go from one grade level to the next when we've had them a full academic year. And that's what you see up there, and I'll probably mess this up, but what you see here is exceeding in both English Language Arts and math. And what that means is, is that when you look at our overall growth scores, you compare that to the state's average placed at a mean average, and then you look at our scores, our scores were statistically significantly higher than the mean enough to warrant the exceeding classification. In some areas, when we're more towards the middle and they weren't statistically significant, we'd be on track. If you're statistically significantly behind, then that's when you reach the floor on growth. But for us, both were exceeding, which is great. That means kids are growing more than a year typically in our school district, and we're very excited about that. Status is reported there in the old MAP Performance Index, which is a weighted index score given for performance in math, or MAP, and as you can see there, it's the average of three years, and when you compare us to the state average, we are on track and we are ahead of the state. The state is the triangle there, we're the line with the number next to it. Now, when you go to progress, it's a little more complicated as far as the calculation used, but basically you're looking at the first two years' average in comparison to the second and third years. So you take years one and two, they compare that to a constant, they give you a gap score, and they give you percentages off that. Would you boil all that down, basically what it means is, did you grow enough kids towards that gap of keeping kids going in the right direction with a different group of kids coming through to be considered either on the floor, approaching, on track, or exceeding? And essentially, when you look at this, the higher up that you get in your MAP Performance Index, more difficult, even though this is reported in a thing called norm curve equivalence, it's going to be to score progress over here because we have three different years we're comparing, different groups of students, and for us, very different sometimes. We have a high transancy rate, so year one may be very different than year two, may be very different than year three. So when you look at this, what I would single out is math was a very good year for us, because not only were kids growing individually, we were succeeding at the grade level, and you also see exceeds here as far as those different groups coming through, still showing growth, which is fantastic. We still had a strong year in English Language Arts, but one thing we want to look ahead to is, you know, we were at 355.3, right, guys? Because I have bifocals now, is that what's up there? Very good, okay. I thought that that was it, I read it a few times today, but we do want to pay attention to that metric and make sure that we're still growing groups. So even though we're approaching here, that's not a bad thing, we would have gotten 100% of the points had we been scored in the old method used last year. That's still something that we just want to keep an eye on, right there. Nothing really bad, but strong performance overall. This is the role celebrates for us as a school district. This is our subgroup achievement. And as you can tell, in English Language Arts, we're exceeding in that growth metric, very same type of metric that I described to you earlier. Status, we're very strong, we're on track, and remember, if I left that out, status meant that you're going, 75% of your students are on track to be proficient by the year 2020. So we're moving that direction, and progress is on track as well. Now you look at math, kids are going about towards the mean, which is what we'd want Now you look at math, kids are going about towards the mean, which is what we'd want to do, but our status is there, and look at how we exceeded as far as the progress again in those groups. Okay? So once again, when you look at these, these three metrics, if this would have been the old system, we still got a hundred percent of the points here. Okay? So, great job, and appreciate the, the leadership we have out there and our teachers doing the hard work. This is an area we need to think about in the future, because again, as I mentioned, notice that college and career readiness, the first one is college and career readiness assessments. So this would be ACT, SAT, work keys, ASVAB, things of that nature. Students taking it also weighted on how they performed, giving us this calculation. We're seventy-three percent of our kids ahead of the state average, again, that little diamond there in the line, and see, we're doing a great job there in the exceeding area. But notice, on progress, not as many kids moving along. So what I would say is, this is a great score, exceeding for the state, but we do want to keep an eye on making sure now that we're getting all of our kids taking college and career readiness exams, that we keep helping them do better and better and better. That's going to be what, what happens in this. In the advanced placement area, this would be enrollment in advanced courses, taking an AP class, IB, or AP test, IB test, PLTW, IRC, TSA, or getting a B in advanced course. And as you can tell, once again, we're doing well in that area. We're at sixty-point-three percent. But here again, that floor there, even though we're pushing it up, we still want to try to move kids, having them all take the test. Now we have to help continue them, you know, to get better and better when they're taking those exams. That's basically what that's telling us. Post-secondary placement, this is an area, this is a work on for us right here. We're in on track. Notice that's below the state average. And then we're in on track here as far as progress, so we're ahead of that, so we, we are growing each group as far as what our kids are doing. But the one thing we want to look at, it is not the fact that we're not able to, to contact kids, it's just sometimes when we're contacting them, they're not doing really anything that gives us any credit after they graduate. So maybe they're not enrolled in school, maybe they're not employed, you know, any kind of various answer that's given back to us, to us, which is reflecting this here. So we need to continue to work on prepping our kids to be successful regardless of what they do, when they go on to college and career, and then be able to follow that up. So we're going to continue that. It, it is a bit more of a struggle for us to track kids who've moved, a lot of kids move automatically, but really no excuses. We want to continue to prepare them to be successful in the future. This is kind of the, the percentages here that surround those three. As you can tell, growth is good, but we need to make that better, and we want to make sure that we're moving kids along. Finally, and this is the one really that I would encourage you to look at, left to right. Okay, status. You're talking high status scores in the nineties here. This is an example of the ones where these aren't going to be much higher in progress. Okay? So, for example, like we said in, in study session, if you're a hundred percent, year, year one group, a hundred percent year two group, a hundred percent year three group, you're not, you're not technically not progressing, because you're already there, you know? So our, our numbers growing here are, are smaller, and that's very much something that we can explain through the, the state's metric here. And, and great job. I know our administrators work very hard, and our teachers work very hard at this attendance piece. And we're at ninety-one point seven percent of our students being here ninety percent of the time or better. So that, that's great work. There's a lot that goes behind that to get that done, and, and that has, that's, that's important on all sorts of factors. Most importantly, the learning. They need to be here to learn. So, at this time, as I said, the rusty pitcher, relief pitcher is done. Can I answer any questions for you?
I'll say on behalf of the board, I want to thank all of our administrators, our staff, our kids for consistently getting these numbers high. We do appreciate it. So you guys, you guys shine in the state of Missouri.
Absolutely. And one thing I'll, I'll close out with here, if we were using last year's metric, and we don't have science in yet, we would have one hundred percent of our points, which is, is something no one else in our region has done. So congratulations to all the work that everyone's doing, including the board. That's, that's great, great news. So, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Enner. Proposed job descriptions, Mrs. Bills?
Thank you, Mr. President. The following attached proposed job description are presented for your review as a first reading. Four point ten point one, Principal-Secretary Elementary. Four point ten point two, Principal-Secretary Middle School. Four point eleven point two, District's Discipline Secretary. Administration will request approval at the regular November meeting.
Thank you. Proposed twenty twenty twenty-one, twenty, or twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school calendar, Mrs. Bills?
Thank you, Mr. President. Missouri has passed a law that school cannot start more than ten days before Labor Day. This year, we started school on August fourteenth. Next year, however, the earliest we will be able to start is August twenty-fourth. So as a result of this law being passed, we kind of had to rethink our calendar options for the twenty twenty-one school year. The proposed calendar is considered a max calendar. In a max calendar, snow days are built into the calendar, so when we miss snow days, we don't have to make them up. As a result, this guarantees that we receive the days off that we have been scheduled. So we will be guaranteed our last day of school, and then scheduled breaks that we have. This calendar also provides two full weeks of our holiday break and a full week of spring break, which we know is important to our patrons. We did send the calendar option out to staff and received a ninety-seven point nine present, approval rating from staff, and so we will be happy to answer any questions between now and next board meeting on the proposed calendar.
It's kind of a tough calendar for me to look at. My daughter graduates next year, and I don't care for it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'm not the one here. I know her and him. Okay. Action items, transportation route approval, Dr. Berger.
Thank you, Mr. President. We'll call Mr. Wilken up, and he'll do the program evaluation and FY twenty route approval.
Thank you, Dr. Berger, and Mr. President. I'll just go through this real quick of our transportation program, you know, goals and objectives. You know, transport students safely to and from school at all times, provide accurate information to parents, students, and school officials, and develop and maintain knowledge and skills to provide safe, efficient, and reliable transportation system to our patrons. And then, you know, progress, moderate and balanced student loads for route efficiency, maintain the website of the Transportation Department. We utilize bi-weekly, bi-weekly training meetings to disseminate information. We started this a couple of years ago, getting into small groups to enhance the knowledge of our, knowledge base of our staff, and this be, we're beginning our second year of our mentor program for all of our new drivers, and we're pairing them up with some of our veteran drivers. Explanation data, we have an internally developed database utilized to track bus mileage by category. E-school, you know, is used to track the student bus discipline. Tiger Net is used to help maintain and track trips and hours worked. We have quite a few trips. And then our mechanics has the quantum solution equipment to help utilize the track bus maintenance and repair costs. So continued improvement for effectiveness. We continue to have route modifications before, be performed on a continued basis. Number of students transported, number of miles driven will be used to determine the efficiency of the program. Transportation director will continue to work with building principals and bus drivers to improve student discipline. Bi-annual bus safety inspections will be conducted by the Highway Patrol, and we check our buses every day with a fuel crew, with our fuel crew to make sure they're all under, you know, the safe working conditions. And then we track annual repairs for, of the expenses to be justified and reasonable. And then continued products, we still have going on. We have GPS tracking system. We continue to pilot that to make sure it's in good working order. We continue to implement the use of Wi-Fi on, we have four new trip buses, we have them on five currently. It's still, it's, it's, it's a good process, you know, that definitely helped, you know, with our Chromebook work and then one-to-one. It's, it still has a little wrinkles to it, but we're still working and, and getting it working, you know, a lot better. Again, the mentor program, talked about that earlier. Continue to provide professional development to staff in the department, definitely, you know, safety and working with students, and working on finalizing a procedure manual for our, our school bus drivers. So some of these facts I threw in here, I don't know if, if everyone knew this, but our school district's a hundred seventy-two square miles. We are traveling, and I apologize, that number is incorrect on, on that. It's about forty-one hundred miles each day. That's not, including trips or daily shuttles. That's up two hundred miles from last year. We've received the Missouri Highway Patrol inspection, and their program, we scored ninety-eight point five percent, you know, of our fleet, and that's through sixty-five buses. There's over a hundred items that's checked on each bus, so that's a, you know, very high score for that. And then with the DESI recognition award, we've, we've scored ninety percent or above. This is our nineteenth consecutive year from last June that we've scored on that. And then we've implemented the remind message system with our employees, and that's, that's helped our communication tremendously. And then with the bus routes, we currently have forty-eight A routes, thirty-eight B routes, six special education routes, five to early childhood, and that's the correct miles, four thousand one hundred seventy-one miles we travel each day. We added, we got rid of eighteen transfer routes. When I first started, I think there was thirty-six buses in total that transfer, and we've got it down to eleven. So we're continually making progress, and with all of that, we've seen an increase in West Waynesville in the population, so we added another high school and elementary bus to it. Does anybody have any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Carl. I have a motion to...
Yay, Carl!
Only one, only one to get a standing ovation tonight.
Night's not over. Motion to approve transportation route approval. Mr. Keeling makes a motion, has a second?
Second.
Mr. Kreider, second, on favor show of hands, for all motion carries. Proposed early separation incentive plan, Mrs. Bills?
Thank you, Mr. President. The board came to consensus during summer retreat on guidance that we needed in order to determine if entering into early separation incentive plans with teachers would be financially beneficial to the district. Some of those guidelines are enrollment trends, staffing needs, and instructional programming, and also the financial state of the district and Impact Aid. After careful review of these guidelines and follow-up conversations with the Board of Education, administration is recommending to not offer an early separation incentive plan for the nineteen-twenty school year.
Any comments or questions? Do you have a motion? Keeling makes a motion, has a second?
I'll second that.
Kreider, second, on favor show of hands, for all motion carries. Proposed job descriptions, second reading, Mrs. Bills?
Thank you, Mr. President. The following attached job descriptions are presented for a second reading. Two point twenty-two-two, Instructional Support Server Specialist. Five point one point two, Speech Language Pathologist Assistant. Five point three point one, School Resource Officer. Administration requests approval of the above job descriptions as presented, please.
Any comments or questions? Do you have a motion? I'll make that motion. Keeling makes a motion, has a second? Mrs. Kreider on second. Favor show of hands? For all motion carries? The district surplus, Dr. Berger?
Thank you, Mr. President. Board approval is requested to declare used, damaged, outdated items and equipment as surplus property. All items will be published through Tiger Tales for sale by way of the online government auction, GovDeals.
Comments or questions? Do you have a motion? Mr. Keeling? Has a second? Mrs. Kreider, all favor show of hands, for all motion carries? We've already went into closed session, so we have a motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Mr. Ponder makes the motion? Mr. Keeling makes the motion? Mrs. Kreider, seconds, all favor show of hands? We are adjourned. Thank you all very much.